I'll now call this regular workshop meeting of the Jacksonville City Council to order. And we have a copy of the agenda for the workshop tonight. I would entertain a motion to adopt that agenda at this time.
Move for adoption of the agenda? Say.
Any discussion here or none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So Dr. Hitter, I'm going to turn it over to you for your first presenter for the Jack Amiette survey.
Mayor and members of council, thank you for coming out this evening. Two weeks ago, we talked about the Jack Amiette survey, and we also talked about creating a citywide survey. We'd like to review both of those with you this evening. Council also asked about demographics. And so we have our Mr. Demographics. Glenn did an outstanding job. This was mailed to you several days ago. But I would like to have Glenn start off with reviewing the demographic information. So I'll turn it over to Susan and Glenn, please.
All right. Well, good evening, Mayor, Council, and everyone else here. We want to thank you. I did send a document to you in a PDF, and it is including your agenda also on there of the demographics. This evening, while that allowed you to look at the, all the zones at one time by topic, this evening, I'm going to look at the zones individually so that you can get a profile of them. And we'll be moving through this at the speed that you wish that I move through it. Insofar as looking quickly at the city, this is what the American Community Survey, the most recent one of which is done in May of each year for our community. And we get it, it's kind of one year removed. There's a three-year package, excuse me, a one-year package, and then there's a five-year package that lets you smooth out some of the inconsistencies from some sort of surveying that's being done. If you recall, the American Community Survey takes the place of when some people used to get the long form. They won the sweepstakes with the census. In 2010, that was done away with, and then now we have the American Community Survey that gives us much more up-to-date information in the time instead of having to wait for a census every 10 years. So you can see, you've heard this many times, the median age, 23.1. And we're overwhelmingly male in the city. Seventy-four percent of our population is 44 or younger. The number of people who speak a second language is there for you. And the minority, that's non-white population, is 32%. And it's real interesting that it's an equal percentage of never married and now married in there. So you can do the math to see the divorced separated and otherwise in there. We have nearly 50% of our population has had some college. And veterans comprise 21%. The Complete Count Committee did a review of the veterans' population in Ansel County and Jacksonville. They do believe this is one of those under-reported groups, that it just doesn't pass the smell test of, that just doesn't look quite right. You see both the personal income, household median income, and family median income. Remember, a family is when two or more persons in a household are related. That gets counted as a, as a, the poverty level is 14%. That's calculated from looking at personal median and family income and indexing it across the nation. And with the cost price index, then it comes up to what poverty level is at this time. And interesting, Richard found this very interesting about this, that as a city, 92% of our residents reported they have at least one or more computing device. And 85% have an internet subscription. You'll see some huge disparities in this when we look at the zones. This is how the zones are arranged, in which we mentioned Zone 1, that was going to be our target survey group, that was for Jack Amiette, would be there in the center. And then just going around, we took everything basically west of the New River and made that Zone 2. Zone 3 is basically Northwoods, and those areas not counted in Zone 1. And Zone 4 is most everything from the intersection of Western Boulevard and Marine Boulevard out of the city. Zone 5 is everything not in Zone 1 that's south and east of that area is. Now, in some of the things that we're doing, there's a little bit of impreciseness because those zones don't precisely match census tracts and census zones. So we had to do a little interprolution on that. And this is kind of what we came up with in your population distribution. Zone 5, that is Brenmar and the base, clearly is 50% and has a huge population there. And you can see that Zone 4, about 23%. Both 3 and 2 and 1, they're all about equal in population. And the New River immediate area that you're going to see, we're going to sub that out for you to see right there, is basically about a 5% representation. Here's that median age, just to give you a little graphic about all the zones together and how that stacks up. You're going to see in there that New River alone, which we're going to show you the map of where that is, is, has the highest median age in all of the city. Now, of course, there are some group quarters in there, some nursing homes, some other things that drive that. There's also a smaller population, so any significant changes will drive that number up a bit. But I want you to look at Zone 3 with that 30 age group there. That also is something that's interesting to watch, how that area has, has developed as it is. But otherwise, throughout the city, 23.1. Let's look at Zone 5 first. Again, this is a zone that's not included in, in 1, and it's basically everything that's on the base that's west of, of, of the river. And it does include Brenmar and those areas it is. Notice the median age on this one is 21, which is the lowest of the area there because of clearly the base. Forty-four of younger, remember where before that number was in the 50s here, I mean 70s? There's 82%. A number of speaking a second language minority, 23%, which is the lowest area of that, but it's a huge area. Notice now married, 82%. That's an interesting number for that. And of course, out there, computing device, 97% have some sort of computing device. Now, of course, that includes everything that we're seeing on the table today. And those of us who have these electronic leashes of phones, that's a computing device. And an internet subscription, that is access regularly to high-speed broadband, 92%. This is Zone 4 that we mentioned. Notice the median age there is that 24. Fifty-four are, are younger, 78%. Notice also the family median income is the highest in the city in that area. And personal income is the highest in the city of all the areas. Just for comparison, those numbers for computing and internet subscriptions are nearly equal. Zone 3, Northwoods and surrounding areas there, 44 are younger, 59%. That median age, as we mentioned, this is 30.8. And the household median income, this one is, beats out Zone 4 by a few thousand dollars there. 92% and 84% in internet and such there. This is Zone 2. This is the New River Air Station, and areas west of the New River. The one, this, this is what it looks like off-base, so to speak, so you get a little better look at it. This one is overwhelmingly male, 71%. Never married, 55%. Veterans, 29%, which would account for what must be in just that area that's off-base. And there are the few that were living on-base when the surveys were taken, obviously before the hurricane, when they took non-active-duty people out of the housing that was there in the waterfall. Family median income, 43, that was the lowest in the area and the other zones. And then personal income, 21,000, which is the lowest of the zones in that area. This is Zone 1. Now, this is looking at all of it. We get some really good information there because we have several, it's three census tracts. So we're able to be very precise in this one. Median age, 32. Female minority, 46%. Less than a high school grad, 14% of these people. Veterans, 16%, and it's a very small number in this. And then personal income, 16,000. And family median income, 28,000. Poverty level, 21%. And no computer, 24%. And no internet, 44%, which is the highest in the, in our entire area of not having access to internet or other ones. So you can see that that area really looks at it. Now, we can look at just this census tract, which, as you know, is one of the designated areas for opportunity zone. And it's also designated as a historically underutilized business zone by the SBA. So if you were to open a business there, you can potentially qualify for credits that would pay your employees for a certain number of years or 95% of their salary. It beats out a lot of areas. The bold numbers stand for it's above, it's above, below or below, above the average of all the other areas. Excuse me. And so you will see there, 32%, the minority, 68%. Family median and personal income, look at those numbers. They are the lowest in the areas there for those two categories. 34% poverty level and no computer, 44%. And, I mean, 24% in internet, 44%. So you will see that this clearly is an area that is special and an area that has that designation. This is one of the charts I will show you that shows all the zones together, just so you can see. And we use this one or more computing device, that is in the blue, to kind of give you an index of what's happening in those areas, what's there. In the New River area alone, clearly, the highest number, or 68% have a smartphone is their computing device. That is different to the other areas, which have computers, smartphones, and tablets are also out there. So it lets you see how that is. So that's the one number we want you to show there, that in the New River, with that 25% of those people that do not have any technology in that area. And in this one, 44% do not have any sort of internet subscription. As you know, many people think that the internet broadband connections are a self-leveling device that help people achieve. It also overcomes the, the homework gap and doing things such as that. So that's my review of demographics, and I turn it over to Susan now.
Before we get to the, to the actual surveys, we encourage you to study the demographics. I think one of the things that I found most interesting was the information regarding internet service. I know that the league, Mr. Lozera, brought league representatives here several, probably about a month ago for a meeting talking about internet service and broadband. And you can see that citywide, we really are pretty well-covered. But in certain pockets, it's not the fact that the service isn't there, it's the fact that people are not able to take care of it or participate in it because of finances, most likely. The other thing that the survey really helps us see, though, is how neighborhoods have changed over time. And also, the fact that the city is still pretty well-balanced when it comes to different age groups. Now, that wasn't shown in the material that Glenn highlighted for you. But if you go back in the information that he did send out last week, you can see the different age categories. So even though Northwoods has changed, and even though Brenmar has changed, it gives us information on how many children. Because while recreation is not just a youth activity, by doing this type of demographic, it really helps us understand. And I'll give you one example. The reason why we're doing the surveys is to figure out what do we actually need to consider building? It's real easy to say balls and bats. That's what most people think of with recreation. But if you have an aging community, and you find that in a certain area, they're not using internet, maybe one of the things that's telling you is that you should be building, at least in a new complex, a Wi-Fi center, where people can come and do whatever they want to do on Wi-Fi, including do their homework. So let's talk about the demographics for a minute. Is there anything that you want, Glenn? Because it's real easy for me to say, yes, we can do that, because I have Glenn. So is there anything that you didn't see in the demographics that you want us to try to identify for you?
Glenn, when you say internet use, is that cellphone or tablet and what, is that divided or is that all together?
If your cellphone has LTE or higher speeds, then that counts as a broadband connection under the definition for the Census Bureau.
It's not easy to do homework on, on a cellphone. And I'm sure a lot of people have that service now. But still, I think there would be a big gap in being able to properly use what you need to do homework after school product.
And as you know, the-
I was just going to say that it's a long way from any local library, local county. And the county libraries aren't, aren't close.
Just as a note, the definition that the Census Bureau uses, that the FCC uses, which is 25 megs, which I don't think anyone in this room would tolerate too much 25 megs as your broadband connection.
I would just want Glenn to look, look at this one thing I noticed on there. On Zone 5, it just didn't, didn't play-
That's because the, the percentages are too small for them to estimate, so they put zeros there as it was. And so that's, that's what that is. And I, I do need to say one thing, and I apologize, Rich. This does not include, you'll notice that the population is under 5. The American Community Survey, because it does a five-year average, they don't think they have enough numbers to give accuracy to that age group. And they will suppress numbers if the sample size is too small. So that's what's happened in Zone 5. And I should have noted that, but did not. But it is, think about it. How many people over, over 55 live on the base?
Well, not many, I agree. But I was saying, have they been in Brenmar?
It did, it did. But they may get over, the percentage, they may be diluted.
Right. But I mean, again, it's not zero.
It's not.
I knew it wasn't zero.
We need to go out.
Makes you think about the validity of, you see something like that.
Also, going to, looking at my point, how are those numbers included? Would that be Zone 1 as well?
That'd be Zone 5.
Zone 5? So, but that used to serve, Jack Amiette used to service that, that area too. Because it's the closest facility-
Absolutely.
With a basketball court. And everybody doesn't go to camp, especially, I mean, they have more cars than they did, but still, it's laughing. So that's an issue.
Anything else on demographics before we have Susan do the citywide survey? And then the review on the Jack Amiette survey?
Let me ask you a question. What counts as a veteran, too? What are you counting as a veteran?
Well, the Census Bureau-
Right.
Says two or more years of the service.
Okay.
And they don't tell how you, how you were discharged. It's just two or more years of the service and no longer active.
Because that could be, and sometimes when people, I mean, you could do one day, get injured, and be retired. And so it's probably not properly, you know, count those numbers as well. And a lot of times, when you do end up in that type of situation, you try to stay around the base. You got services. So it's going to be a little bit difficult.
For the county, they only counted 21,000 veterans. We just, that number just doesn't seem to pass the smell test.
No way. And I think a lot of, you know, and the need for a more correct count, because even when you do it with Zone 1, I'm like looking at veterans and children. I'm like, something's missing here.
Well, let's go to the citywide survey then.
Sure. Yeah, so like we discussed a couple of weeks ago, we can't, we're coming back to you to review the citywide survey. This is a little bit holistic, and it's an approach for recreation needs and looking at the entire city using all the zones. Some of these are very similar to what you saw before, how long have you lived in the city? That, this is a question just trying to gear a little bit of what is it that leisure means to you? And what do you do for your leisure time? That's just, again, giving us data so that we can better design and look at facilities moving forward. Have you or somebody used, used a facility recreation? Yes, yes, no? That, that one is very similar also. And then this one also tells us, where do you go? Which ones do you appreciate? Which ones do you frequent often? This will kind of narrow down what our citizens are enjoying and, and show us a little bit of that scope. And then we have several open-ended questions. This will give us, give us an opportunity for people to, you know, answer the question as they see fit. So if you visit a park, which, what do you like about it? Pretty basic. If you could design one, what would you do? What would you put in it? Again, this is just designed to gear, gear us towards some choices. If there's an improvement, what would you like to see? What do you want in your park system? And then where have you visited? What recreation facilities have you been to? This also tells us, what are people using the facilities for? And what is it that they, they might be able to tell us about that? Open-ended, if you visited a recreation facility, what do you like about it? Again, if it's a passive recreation center like Hurst Street, or if it's, say, the Commons and the gym and that sort of thing. So pretty, pretty straightforward. Again, what programs would they like to see? Or what have they participated in? Art, dance, exercise, those sort of things. Open-ended gives us a little bit of freedom to hear what they have to say. And what would you like to see?
One of the reasons why we want open-ended questions is we have found in surveys that the more direction you give a person, the less they think. Also, they will feel obligated to check something even if they're not using it. So that's the reason why you notice that four of our questions are, are really open-ended. If you want to know somebody's opinion, you don't say, for example, Mr. Thomas, do you like red or green?
Blue.
People suddenly feel like they have to pick red or green. So it's not unusual in, in more modern surveying of this type to have in there some formal questions that are formalized, like which zone do you live in, or how many years you lived in the city. But if you really want information on what a person wants, you don't say, do you want a tennis court or a basketball court? Now, you fill that surveys in the past where you were given five choices. Do you want a swimming pool? Do you want a tennis court? Do you want a basketball court? When you do that, people don't think. These questions are designed intentionally to be open-ended. Now, we're hopefully going to get thousands of these back. I will also say to you that, and Glenn probably has a better number than I, but normally in a survey of this nature, if you get back 13 to 15% of them, you've done a good job. You've done a good job, which sounds low.
Let me ask you a quick question, just to stem aside my curiosity. Is there a transit stop in or around each of the centers that we have?
That's right.
Well, let's put it this way. We will get you a map that shows the latest transit stop, of course, is at the Commons, where we were able to build the park and ride facility. But we can also show you, that's an excellent question, because we may find that if transit's at the front door, it's one thing. But if it's three blocks away, it's not. So we'll get you a map that shows transit stops.
Will it show approximate times that they're in the area as well?
Certainly. And numbers of people that get on and off, does that ever compute?
We would have to collect that data, sir. We could certainly do that, but that would be from here maybe forward. We couldn't look retroactively. I think the only two parks that we have that aren't currently served are, at least directly served, Woodlands and Northeast Creek.
What about Georgetown?
Yeah. Well, not directly, but certainly within walking distance, yes.
We'll get you a map on that. Good, good information.
Okay. Anything else?
So this is the question 12. I think this is the last, next to last one. And again, it really helps us knowing who's in the households. And that really helps us also designing facilities as far as what, what families are looking for. I think that's the last one in the citywide. This is just a recap. We did not change anything from the survey I showed you two weeks ago. This one, next one for Jack Amiette, it's pretty short and simple. Again, some of them are overlapping. Question 2 is geared specifically to that location and what it is in a facility they would like to see and what they used before the hurricane. This is specific, again, on the programs, and it really gets to the nuts and bolts on, as a staff, what we need to design for what programs they would like to see. Question 4, again, if they were three things that they would like to see in a facility, what would it be? And then the open-ended, one new program or function you would like to see in Jack Amiette Recreation Center. And again, the same ages question. So the survey, we have a multitude way, you know, multiple ways of implementing this and getting it out to the public. Our philosophy is of, this afternoon, but given with your direction, I think we would like to roll out the Jack Amiette survey first so that we can get that input and obviously get direction on that. Take a short, brief time period to evaluate, present that to you possibly, and then roll out the city- and then roll out the citywide survey. I feel like if we do both at the same time, or we overlap them too close, you're just gonna confuse your public. So Jack Emmett first, get that specific information so that we can keep moving forward with that situation. And then we can roll out the citywide and then move forward with, you know, the bigger question of our facility and our recreation needs and our capacity issues.
Yeah, we were afraid that if we sent out the citywide and then in the next month sent out the Jack Emmett, people would say, well, I've already gotten this, or throw it away. But we're thinking, I think Mr. Bittner mentioned the water billing. We could possibly get the Jack Emmett survey out in the May schedule, is that what you're thinking?
It would go out in the April bills, which would be dated May, yes.
And then maybe the citywide will look at whether summer is gonna have an impact. The nice thing is, we're not under a time deadline that we have to have this information back. What are your thoughts about the approach, or the questions, or anything you wanna have us add to this?
When you said door-to-door, what did you mean? You were gonna take them to the door, or you're gonna actually do a personal survey?
In the, in the Jack Emmett corridor, New River. Melanie and the staff are comfortable with going door-to-door and just getting those-
Personally?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think as long as we have the guidance from, you know, Dr. Woodruff and maybe, you know, some others. But I think we're comfortable with talking with people, getting their specific feedback. A lot of time, the conversation helps guide the, you know, the, the input, you know, and helping those, you know, get filled out. If there's any ADA issues, then we can, you know, help them fill that out and so on and so forth, so.
One thing we can also do is, you know, a degree of door-to-door citywide, where, you know, if you would like to have the opportunity to go meet some of the people in your ward, you can go door-to-door or hit every fifth house or whatever. We do need to make sure though, that we are as, if I can use the term statistically balanced as we can be, so that we're not just, we're not just surveying citywide people who don't have any children at home. So we, we welcome any approach, and we certainly welcome your participation in getting the survey information out.
You could also have maybe some volunteers hit some of the, right now you have a lot of soccer Saturday.
We have a lot of events.
And a lot of events that maybe they could filter around, talk to people. I guess you wouldn't know if they live in Jacksonville, though that's the only issue.
It definitely helps with the zones, that's where the zones are gonna be key. Where do you live?
Where do you live?
You know, we definitely have a lot coming up. In particular, to Dr. Woodruff's earlier comment, the summer months and all of these special events and the movies and the concerts, just with our programs alone, that would be a great opportunity for a citywide, you know, possibly getting the input on that one. Cause we have contact with a lot of people on a weekly basis. So that's a great point, thank you.
How old is the, the professional survey we had done?
It is hitting eight years. Eight years.
And what you may decide is, once you see the level of participation and the information you get, you may decide you want to hire another consultant to do this. We would prefer for you to give us the opportunity as a staff to see how valid the information is that we can gather for you.
I think that's the best way to do it.
One thing I would like to do is possibly let the committee, Recreation and Parks Committee, look over the survey.
We have a meeting on Monday, so we were scheduling to do that.
Proud to go forward with this.
Oh yeah, absolutely. We have a meeting on Monday, and so it was part of the agenda.
The other thing is, the questions are, they're not frozen. If you have suggestions that you'd like to see any of the questions worded differently, or if you want another question added, please get that information to us. Is it reasonable for us to say that by April the first, what's the, the mailing deadline?
We have to have everything prepared by about the eighth or so, so we can get it to them by the 10th, so.
So if we ask council to get any changes, wording, additional questions to us by April the first, that would work in your schedule?
It'll make it work, sir.
Is that acceptable to the council?
That is fine.
Yes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to ask members of the Arts Council to come up, if they are. Anybody else that they're meeting?
Yeah, I've got Catherine Ackerman with me as well. She's the treasurer of my board, and I have, and I also have Anna Pasquale, who is our, our resident artist for the Creative Forces Program that we, we have in the council. So I, I wanna say thank you to all of you for giving me a couple of minutes to talk to you tonight. The Arts Council is very near and dear to my heart. I, I came into it about a year and a half ago, and it has been one of the most rewarding things I've been able to do in, in my entire life. I came from the world of government, I was a contractor, I was a senior detail analyst for the government. So I have a background in art from ECU with a business minor. So I, I'm pretty well-suited to the job, and I, I, I hope that I can continue to do it. I'm gonna give you an update on what's going on. The city and the county both fund us each year. And with that comes the responsibility of making sure that you guys are all aware of what's going on with the council. So I spoke at the county commissioner's event last night, excuse me for lack of a better word. And I was nervous there too, if you can tell. So please forgive me if I sound a little bit nervous, it's just, this isn't nearly my forte. But we are gonna make our way through it anyway, okay? So like I said, my name's Noah White, I'm the executive director over at the Council for the Arts. This is Kathy, this is Anna, both of them play a huge role in what goes on over there. They are here to support me tonight, so I can tell the story of the council and what's going on, and, and why I need to let you know what, what the issues are that we're having right now. So we're gonna go on to this slide right here, which is where and what is the Arts Council? Well, if you haven't noticed, we're right across the street. We have shiny new windows and doors now, which makes me very happy. We, we basically are, we're a nonprofit. We showcase artists and art for the art community. We also have monthly shows that change every 30 days. So this month, we have a competitive show that's going on in there right now. We had a first prize, second prize, and a third prize. The artists are always excited about it. It's a really good, little friendly competition that they do with one another, and we always have a great time with it. We had a reception last Friday night, and it was a really lovely time. We also, we also sub-grant out to other nonprofits in the area. We get a grant from the North Carolina Arts Council, and 50% of that, we sub-grant back out to other nonprofits in the area. And I'm proud to say this past year, we gave out $26,700. So that's a lot of help to a lot of organizations around here. So we, we play a pretty vital role in helping these smaller nonprofits keep going and, and being able to, to head forward.
What kind of, kind of nonprofits do you contribute to?
Basically Jacksonville Jazz Coalition, the Choral Society.
So basically, anything that's related to the arts?
Yeah, if it's related to the arts generally, yes, absolutely. Cultural arts most, most specifically is what we try to stick with, because we always wanna promote the arts in our community, because the arts are a really powerful thing in any community. So we'll go on to the next slide. So what do we do? Basically what we do, we have three large things that we do. We do Art Block each year. This year, it's gonna be moved to September, because we're having to get our feet back under us because of the damage from the storm and things like that. Art Block is slowly but surely turning into a cultural arts event for, for our community, which is a huge undertaking. And it's actually starting to, to develop into what it was originally thought to be in the first place. Our whole thought process was to turn it into a cultural arts event for our community. And we started out as basically an art street fair, so we could sell art and expose all of our community to the arts. We also have Creative Forces, which is a military program that I'm very proud to be a part of. The Creative Forces is funded by the National Endowment for the Arts, and it's helped manage by the North Carolina Arts Council up in Raleigh. What we're doing with them, it's an open art session every Wednesday night from 5:00 to 9:00 PM. It's open to active and retired military personnel and their families, and their, their service animals, their pets, whoever they need to come in to make them feel comfortable in that surrounding, we allow it to happen. We do a potluck with them every month as well. And what we do is, we bring in other artists to teach them different skillsets as well.
Federates too, right?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes, absolutely. And one of the, one of the other big things that we do is we do the Arts in Schools Program. I work with Dr. Peel over at the school, over at the school board. She's the cultural arts director. And she and I sit down each year and we, we go over everything to determine what type of, or what type of programs we wanna bring in for everyone. We try to bring in the ballet, the opera, and theater for the children. So what we also do is, we also bring in cultural arts programs as well, like the African-American Dance Ensemble and Didgeridoo Down Under, which of course is Australia. So the children get to interact with these people, and they get to learn about the, the aspects of what they're talking about with their culture, their art, their dance, their music. So that's a really big program that I enjoy doing as well. It's, it's wildly popular with the kids. We service anywhere from 2,000 to 2,500 students every year with this particular program. So we'll go on to the next one. And I kinda gave you the rundown on these Art Block, being our yearly, yearly street festival celebrating arts and cultural diversity of our community. Creative Forces, I'll give you a breakdown on that as well, I should have been clicking while I was talking. But we're, we're gonna overlook that part of it and just keep on going. And then Creative Forces as well. The next, we just finished a pottery class with the Creative Forces team, they enjoyed it immensely. We are about to start a, a creative writing course for them. We're working with Coastal Community College, and Colin Halloran is a creative writing professor over there. He's going to come over and do a six-week course with the people that wanna participate. So they're getting a very well-rounded amount of experience. So it, it's something that we're very proud that we can be a part of. I'm also working directly with the NEA to help them determine the standardized way to start these in other, in other communities as well. So everything that we do, we're kind of the guinea pigs for them. And I'm putting together all of the data, I'm putting together all of the handouts, you know, marketing, et cetera, so that way it can all be turned into them and they can utilize it as they need. So we'll go on, and of course, the school programs that we talked about, love that as well. This is the big, this is the big question right here. What is the status of the Arts Council right now? Well, Hurricane Florence, it, it took its toll on everyone in Onslow County, most definitely. I live in Duplin County, and it was, it was quite rough for us as out there as well. You try not to complain, because people have it worse than what we did, you know? So you, you want, you wanna be, you wanna get your point across, but you also don't wanna negate someone else's feelings on what they've had to deal with. But the council lives off of earned income and rentals from our room and things like that, and we're not able to do that. And we haven't been able to do that for about eight months of the 2018, 2019 calendar. Because prior to the hurricane coming, our HVAC system went out. So it was about 100 degrees in there. And, you know, trying to have shows and, you know, fans and, and things like that, it's very difficult. It's also very, very hard on the art, because oils and things like that, it reacts very unfavorably with heat. So as you can see, they put the doors in across the street. That's great, but that hasn't replaced our ceilings, our floors. We've got problems with the kitchen, we've got problems with the restroom. So all of this is gonna be a very time-consuming thing for us, because there's also asbestos to deal with. Because the tiles and the floor, asbestos. So that'll have to be evaded in order for us to continue on. All this does is keep adding to our issue as we go along, because if we can't have earned income, it makes it almost impossible for us to cover our overhead each month. So we're hoping that, you know, things will start to move a little bit quicker, and we'll go on from here and, and, and get some things done. And right now, I've got the, the show that's showing in the smaller side of the gallery, because we can kinda get people in there. We, we, if we've not been anything else, we've been tenacious about trying to keep going, whatever we can't keep going. Creative Forces, I was not going to stop that. It was, nothing was gonna stop me. If I had to find somewhere else to do it, we were gonna make it happen, because it's that important. The people that attend that particular program in, in particular, they rely on us, as do our, our community. And it's very important that I, I be consistent and don't let these people down. Because if you let the people down, then, then you have nothing. They're, they're not gonna come back, they're not gonna be a part of it, and they're not going to interact with us. So what's the future? Well, the future, I like to think of the future as being bright. All of this sounds like bad luck and all of that, but it's just a challenge, okay? I, I've gotten the works, I, I've talked with Sandra and Chip out at the airport. So we're in the process of doing a, a permanent installation for the airport, where we're utilizing suitcases. So this'll tie into tourism for Jacksonville as well. So all of the suitcases will be hand-painted by artists, and it will be different scenes from around Jacksonville and Onslow County. So it will show people what they're coming into. It'll also let them know that the Arts Council exists, and it'll give them little bits and pieces of where, hey, where is that? And people will start asking questions, because you always wanna start a dialogue if possible. We're starting a beginners' music program as well. That's something I've wanted to do since we got here, because it's called Council for the Arts, not Council for the Art. So we need to reach out, we have limited space, it's difficult to do that. But you know what? We can do anything we put our minds to. I know I'm stubborn, and I'm gonna try my best always to, to do something, because this job has been one of the most fulfilling things I've ever done. I, I love what I do, and I hope my enthusiasm shows to everyone when I talk to them. So the beginners' music, music program is just one thing that is gonna start the ball rolling with stretching out and going out to other areas in the community as well. We've got dancers in this community, we have theater, Mimi, Mimi with Debbie's Angels, and we need to start utilizing our in-house talent and making sure that we're showcasing that for everyone. The other thing that we're pretty proud of, and we've talked with Glenn about this, is a mascot program. The mascot program is similar to the Bears in New Orleans, okay? We wanna do a bulldog. And we want our artists to be the ones that paint the bulldogs, and we get them all around Jacksonville. It'll help us with earned income, so we're not dependent on the city and the county all the time. What we wanna do is try and reach out and turn it into a working business, where we're actually, you know, generating income for us to keep us going. So the, the mascot program is something that I thought, I, I was entertaining right when I first got here, because I was like, that's such a, it's such a fun idea. Because there's many things you can do. For starters, we'll start out there at the airport, put one in at the airport, and then we'll have a map going around the city of Jacksonville for people to go and find the others, and, you know, check them off the list, and, and make some kind of a game out of it, where it's interactive for the people. Not necessarily stealing their idea, but we're borrowing a little bit of it. And there's nothing wrong with borrowing, as long as you give credit where credit is due. The other thing is that our, our gallery does not have a children's area. And that's something I feel pretty strongly about as well. We've got Zing Zoom, which is wonderful, and I refer people to them all the time, as I do with all the businesses downtown. Because I strongly believe that in order for downtown to be great, we need all these small businesses to come in. And we need unique businesses to come in. So if I can help promote any of them, the organic market, Brew Downtown, Biagio's, Barley Wine, so on and so forth, artworks, even people that would be competing, figuratively competing with me. It's not about one individual, it's about the whole. So we need to make sure that, you know, I'm gonna put that, that children's center in there, so the people that are enjoying the art gallery with us can still feel comfortable bringing their children, and their children have something to do as well. So there's a lot that we can do and a lot that we need to do. And I'm hoping we get the opportunity to do it. This last slide is, this is the sign of hope for our future. We look, I came to work and I looked at that boarded-up door every day, and it just made me feel helpless. And I, I didn't enjoy anything about it. So I, I'll tell you the kind of people that participate in your Arts Council. I have an artist, her name is Sharon Ferguson, and she has debilitating arthritis, but she's a painter. And I had a volunteer day at the council. And the volunteer day was about trying to piece it back together as best we could, so we could make it work. And we had people painting, we had people working on, on tearing out walls and trying to make the gallery better than what it was before. And Sharon sat out there in the cold and painted the door for us. And, you know, she's amazing. And the fact that she cares about that place and cares about the, the fact that she believes that I can do something great for this community, and I can't fail these people. I don't want this to go down on my watch, but we are very close to that, and I need to tell you that. We, we need to make sure that when you guys are, are taking into consideration about grants and things this year, please just keep us in, in your thoughts, because it is important what we do, and I am very proud of what we do. And I can't imagine- And I can't imagine, if I can get this place back on its feet, what I can accomplish. So I thank you all for letting me talk to you for a couple of minutes and I hope that it made some sense to you.
I'd like to jump in here right quick. I frequent Arts Council.
Yes, you do.
I do a few things with words on paper myself.
Yes.
And I work with a group of incredible young folks called Soul Society.
Yes.
And there's no limit on the type of talent that's in there. Like you said, dance, theater.
Yes.
Everything.
Yes.
Going back to the military community, when I worked as a special service officer, I went through the, when the, what's it called?
Arts therapy?
Arts therapy.
Yep.
And was so impressed because a lot of times people get over whatever situation they're going through through freedom of expression. And that involves young folks or older folks. My drug of choice is, you know, just. You know, my drug of choice is poetry.
Yep.
You know, so.
Brianna LaBrager.
Yeah.
That's all I have to say.
So it's.
The art gallery comes to us every third Saturday of the month and because of us being closed down, they had to find, I apologize for talking over your mic. But they, they came back on March 1st. And that is a huge, huge deal for us because the amount of talent that I get exposed to and I can, I can help them. You know, when we have events and programs, I call them. I'm like, hey, come on down. I want you to do a poetry reading. I want you to, I want Joelle to sit there and play the cello for us. I mean, and he is the person that I'm actually working with to start the music program. So, so there's, there's a, there's a lot of good that can come out of this organization and I just, I, I'm very passionate about it. And I, and I just, I just, if I have to beg, I'm like, somebody just please pay attention to the fact that we need some help.
Would you pay for rent in it?
We pay, we actually have it pretty good. It's $812.50 a month. I mean, it's been the same since we've been there. But even with that, it's still, you know, you've got to figure that's about a $12,000 drain on our, on our overhead each year. And, you know, we're hoping, what I'm going, what we're doing right now is I'm working with the board and we're trying to come up with ways to cut some of this overhead and simplify what we do so we can still have sustainable programs and still do things that make a difference.
If you talk to the library, I know at some point Jacksonville needs a bigger library.
Yes.
You know? And one of their issues is a lack of space too. I don't know, maybe there's some synergy there.
I talked to everybody that will listen to my stuff.
But we'll talk about that moving forward.
Richard, is it possible to just put out, waste a lot of their time to see, you know, what their financial situation looks like in terms of who you're leasing from, is your stuff getting fixed? The timelines, what you're paying and your overhead so that maybe we could... Because obviously the Arts Council is an extremely important part of a, of a community. And as you travel the state, you learn. How much investment is made in arts and what that can do for a community. But I think in order for us to help you, we probably need a lot more detailed information.
I'll be happy to give you whatever you need.
And did they ever make any grants available through the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources that may be available to you? I know that one time.
The grant game is, and forgive me, I'm fairly new at it because I've learned on, kind of, kind of in the past year and a half about grants. We do research some grants and things like that, but generally what you run into is they, the grants are very specific. You can't use grant, most of the time you can't use grant money for overhead. So you end up having to try and, you know, get in sponsors and donations and things like that.
I'm sure they would want it used towards something artistic.
Exactly, exactly. So most of the time, it's very specific what you're going to do and how you have to use them.
I had a conversation one time with the former Secretary of that department and she had said that they did make those grants, you know? But that, you know, that would be something you might want to consider down the road, you know, if you want to improve something artistically.
Yeah, that's like with the music program. I'm searching for a grant that's specially geared towards music. So that way we can, when you start looking in terms of specifics, it starts to, it starts to fall in line as far as the grants go. The problem that we're running into now, because we've just, we keep shelling out, shelling out and nothing's coming in because of all this time that we've spent with hurricanes and, and, you know, insurance companies and things like that, it's literally killing us financially and it's hurting us in the community as well, which is something I, I just cannot stand for.
One of the things, Glenn, you have comments regarding funding?
Well, I mean, they've, they've been out looking for it. We've been in contact with the state and obviously they have a high opinion of the, of the staff that's there now and the capacity for the future of this matter. Their issue has been that eight months that they were closed, that was no income for them that helps pay those overhead costs as it was. Because think about $25,000 from the state is the effective net of what they get. That's just about pays the rent and stuff and then doesn't give any. The, by some previous action, the group went through the Quality Enhancement for Nonprofit Organizations through UNCW, the QNO program. And so they've had some capacity building from that activity. And one of the outcomes, to give the board credit, was, was bringing Noah on board, have a full-time executive director. You know, now the challenge is, is that, you know, we've got to pay him, you know? And we've got to have him, you know, highly motivated to do those things that'll make a much more sustaining and enduring nonprofit in the community. Toward the end of that, they are open to other board members to come in and help them. They, they've got no lack of artists. You know, it's now having people who wish to look at nonprofit as the business that it must have to sustain itself in a community like this as it was.
One thing for you too, we'd like to also share with you that the property owner has received code violations from the city, not only on that building but adjacent buildings. We were, we were actually asked to come do the code inspections because, let's just say there was a difficulty receiving cooperation between the tenant and the landlord. We normally do not get involved in tenant landlord relations. But because of code violations, and I think you can see when you go out this evening, if you have not noticed, the very attractive windows that have now been put not only in the Arts Council but in the auto place next door, they're almost finished. And that has really improved the general appearance of this block of city, of the downtown.
Thanks to Cost Class.
Yes.
Cost Class has done a great job. On the other hand, some of the challenges that they're facing do not actually fall within the building code or code enforcement. But we're still using code enforcement and the building department. Things such as the ceiling. It got damaged, the roof, I believe the roof has now been repaired. But the ceiling damage has not been repaired. The flooring and the walls, things of that nature. So I do want you to be aware that the city is using the resources that we have from a staff standpoint to encourage the rehabilitation of the building.
So would you be able to provide us that information?
Well, because it's not public record, the one thing I would want Noah to be aware is it's voluntarily given. But once it is given, it does become public record where anyone can see it. So if you, you may want to talk to your board. If you can give us that information, we would be happy to pass it on to City Council.
Thank you very much.
At least we can explore maybe proper ways to help you because we know other funding sources maybe or other ways that we can help you. But we really need to know the landscape.
Absolutely.
Of, of the real issues, to know how long it will take. Is that the right building? Do you need a different, you know, those are things that we have to.
One of the things that we have offered is especially during the time that they're not able to display their art in their building because of damage, that we would welcome the opportunity to put some of the art here in City Hall. We do get a degree of traffic here and we're certainly, that is something that we've offered and we will continue to offer that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You mind if we take a five-minute break?
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, we're back in session. We'll go to our third item of the agenda for tonight.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the transit contract was reviewed in some detail with you several weeks ago. Tonight, we'd like to give you an update. Anthony Prins, the Director of Transportation, please.
Thank you, Dr. Woodruff. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here again with you tonight. As Richard said, we're going to talk about the transit contract again. We did begin the conversation in February, showed you some numbers, talked about the process. We also talked about options for hopefully reducing some of that additional expense that we talked about last time. Before we get into those options and explore those in detail, I think you're really going to like what we've come up with. What I'd like to do is spend just a couple minutes of your time kind of rewinding a little bit, going over some of the history so that we're all on the same page as we go forward with the decision-making process. Jacksonville Transit is currently operated by a fixed route services contractor. We've had the same contractor since 2007. The vendor is MB Transportation. You've seen their advertisements around town for drivers, et cetera. Again, since 2007, through competitive processes, we've renewed their contract twice. So both times, we went out to the market to see if there were other vendors interested, and MB successfully won the contract in both times. We are currently in the final base year of their 2016 contract, and as a result, we've put out a request for proposals in October of this past year. Part of the federal requirements that we have associated with transit, particularly with service contracts, is anytime you renew, you have to go out for competitive awards. So this is just a standard procedure. The proposals were due in December of '18, and I'd like for you to make notes of that date. It's just going to come back in the conversation just to be slide. We selected, we created a selection committee of folks from throughout the city government to advise us on our options. They considered two proposals that we received. One was from Onslow United Transit, the local firm. Of course, we all knew Carol Wong. She was here at our last meeting. And the other was from First Transit. You can see there the annual cost for the first year of what's a three-year initial term contract. Interestingly enough, the incumbent, MB Transportation, did not provide a response. They did know about the process. They were at the pre-bid meeting, but again, they simply did not submit. The recommendation from the committee was to go with First Transit. Even though they weren't the lowest bidder, the feel was that the value we received from First Transit was high, mainly because of the depth and the breadth of their experience and their, basically, their organization. And this is where we ended it last time, the not-so-good news. First Transit comes with a price tag, and it's higher than the current MB Transportation contract. You can see the delta there is about $264,000. The good thing in this situation is, of course, the city is not 100% on the hook for transit costs. We share our costs with both the FTA and the NC DOT. So at the time, we were only looking at about an increase of $66,000. Still, that's $66,000 that we prefer not to have to find, and that's where the council recommended that we go back and look at options to help reduce that amount. Again, on the negative side, since that time, we've gone through the budgeting process. We've developed the base budget for transit. Some of our other expenses have increased in cost. First Transit remains the same, but as our other expenses have increased, the number is more around $83,000. But the good news is, we've got some options. They're good options, and hopefully you'll appreciate those as we move forward. Any questions about where we've been? So what we're going to talk about tonight are the options that we've developed. We're going to talk about the startup fee. For those who are involved in the construction industry, you might know this better as a mobilization cost. So basically, it's a non-recurring fee that the vendor charges to come into Jacksonville, set up shop, hire drivers, and be ready to execute on July 1st, which would be the first day of the contract. Talk about potential fare increases, and then we'll also talk about service miles, or the actual amount of service that we put on the ground every year. When we spoke with you in February, this was kind of the approach that we had to the contract, or at least the way that we thought that it might roll out. We've got that startup fee, again, what some people call mobilization in the construction industry. And then we have added to that the actual operating cost of the contract, so the cost of them physically driving the buses. That gave us a total contract amount of around $914,000. And of course, that gives you the precise amount that we've, that they proposed. Again, initially, we felt that all of this would be encumbered and paid for in the fiscal year '20 budget, okay? So the contract would be executed. It would go into effect on July 1st. Then we'd start incurring the expenses. One thing to point out, the $83,000 number that's right there, that's basically where we stand today with the $914,000 and this particular approach to the contract. So trying to be innovative, problem-solving, trying to come down on the actual cost, we put our thinking caps on, and we came up with this. From a realistic standpoint, the actual work associated with the startup is occurring in fiscal year '19, okay? So given FTA regulations and true accounting principles, that expense is eligible for us to pay out of our existing fiscal year budget, okay? What that does is it breaks it off from what we're obligating in fiscal '20 and helps reduce the general fund amount. If you look at the very bottom there, this actually creates a $24,000 and change savings that reduces the $83,000 down, okay? A question, of course, is, so where's $49,000 coming from? Because we've got to pay it. It's a pay-me-now, pay-me-later type of thing, but we have to pay it. The reason that we're able to absorb it in fiscal '19 is because fuel prices have been low. We're relatively conservative in that the number that we budget every year for the dollar per gallon of fuel, and transit is, in fact, the largest consumer of fuel in the city. So that creates some scale savings that we will be able to use to offset this $49,000 expense.
And one gain about that is, to offset that $49,000, it will not have any increase in the contribution from the city for FY '19.
That's correct. So existing money that has been appropriated from the federal government, the state government, and from the city general fund will pay for that $49,000. That's why it's resulting in a $24,000 and change savings for '20. So pretty good start with option one.
If I understand your math, then if you didn't have that startup, if we were, you would have assumed that we had one more year on this contract. You would have had a surplus at the end of this fiscal year?
Yes, sir. Because of the savings with the fuel.
Fuel, okay.
Not necessarily on the contract, but definitely within the transit account, there would be a savings. And I think in all but one year, we've actually realized that. In some years, it's more than others, but of course, we know that fuel prices are on a... You never really know.
And with the feds and a state debt can be carried over into a subsequent budget?
Yes, sir. Once the money is appropriated and we get it approved through the federal government, it is there, and we can actually use it for other purposes. And we've actually done that before, too.
But all those other purposes have to be transit purposes.
Certainly.
Yes, certainly.
That's a running joke around City Hall, is can transit pay for that? The answer is, not always. So for some reason, I believe I've lost the clicker there.
Lynn, can you...
There we go. Okay. Moving on, remember, a second option was to look at fares. Fares with the transit system have remained unchanged since 2007. That's, of course, when we started, when we first started Jacksonville Transit. A lot of things in Jacksonville have changed since 2007. A lot of things in my life and everyone else's lives have changed since 2007. So we're proposing a modest fare increase, which, as you see on the screen here, would take the city route, single trip fare from $125,000 to $150,000, and on down the line. We're recommending this for two reasons. First of all, we feel that if we're asking the general fund for more contribution, it's a difficult financial year for us, we feel that it's only fair, of course, unintended there, but it's only fair that the fares help to pick up some of that cost. We haven't had an increase since 2007. Actually, we haven't had an increase, period, is the way to describe it. And the other reason is, looking at our peer communities in eastern North Carolina and North Carolina as a whole, the fare structure that we're proposing here is certainly not unreasonable. But again, the concept there is, we're going to have to contribute more general fund. It's fair that the passengers should have to contribute some more as well. And by no means is this unaffordable. At least, that's my perspective.
Or you don't think that'll impact ridership?
Well, the way that we projected it, the answer is, it depends, of course. But the way that we projected the revenue gain is that it increases as a decreasing rate, if I said that correctly. So it's not a straight-line increase. We would see an increase, certainly, but not a one-for-one, basically.
What you normally find in a fare situation like this is there is a percentage that will simply say, well, I'm going to find another way. But you will also find that the majority of those find their way back, because depending on a neighbor to get you to the pharmacy and back, that only works so many times. So your ridership may take a small decrease for a short period of time, but I think overall, you'll find that your ridership will continue to be in a positive direction.
And if you ask the passengers, I think they would agree, that this is a modest increase. They're very happy with the service. They'd be more than willing to pay for it. The $1 increase there for the express, I have to explain that a little bit. That is a pretty significant jump, but if you think about it, we're carrying folks from Courthouse Bay to Jacksonville Mall, okay? So it's, you know, proportionally, it's high, right? But in reality, you think about getting a cab at Courthouse Bay and taking it to Jacksonville Mall, I mean, you're going to pull some pretty large bills out of your wallet for that, so...
And just a reminder, the express is for what portion of our community?
It's for our servicemen. It's for our Marines.
It's not an express route that gets you quicker from one end of town to the other. It is the service we provide to people who live on the base, coming in, especially on weekends.
One thing to emphasize, too, is, we're a very, very unique system, not only in North Carolina, but in the entire country. We actually operate on a military installation. I'm not familiar, I'm only familiar with one other system in California that does that. Of course, I haven't really been seeking it out, but I know we're the only one in North Carolina.
What's the average amount of riders you're getting, like, per trip, I guess, coming from?
I'm sure if I can, are you talking about for the express service?
The express.
It varies. You know, sometimes it's heavier, like, during holiday weekends than on normal weekends, but we can certainly give you that information. I'd hate to just pull it out of my pocket. But let me tell you, we hired a consultant to go out there and do a passenger survey. We're just talking about a recreation survey. This was about, I don't know, what was it, around four years ago, five years ago? And a gentleman come down from Raleigh. He didn't know what he was going to experience when we sent him onto the base to ride with the Marines. There were 70 of them on a 30-passenger bus, okay? He got very close with those Marines on the trip back. And based upon that feedback, of course, we've sent more buses down there, and we've been able to kind of help that situation. But ridership is good for the express service, particularly the Scarlet Route. And I'll remember if I said that, but of course, you see at the bottom of the screen, another pretty sizable impact to the general fund by doing the fare increase. Okay, moving on to service miles, this is really the bread and the butter for the contractor and how they generate their revenue, generate their income off the contract. With the base bid, the number was, the number that we used to create the base bid was an average of 405,000 miles per year. So that's how many miles they would actually travel per year, driving the buses on our behalf. Simply through efficiencies, looking at the system, ways that we can cut waste, I think that we can easily reduce it by 5%, okay? That's just cutting back, what's the best way to describe it?
Some hours of operation, some segments of route.
Just making it more efficient, maximizing the investment that we're making in the existing system, okay? The triple E option doesn't necessarily cut service, it just makes it more efficient. We still end up seeing the same level of mobility for the riders, okay? The third option there is just a straight-up service reduction, where we take the 405,000 that we're estimating per year over that three years, and we cut it down by 8% to 373. I know 8% sounds random, but there is some method to that madness. But again, service reduction is basically taking buses off the road, reducing the number of hours that we operate. Triple E, not so much. It's kind of trimming around the edges, making it more efficient.
Are you saying, then, that if you did the triple E and then did some service reduction, you're really only saving 10,000 miles? Is that what I'm looking at, 383 to 373?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. See, it's not total, it would not be cumulative, it would not be 13%. You're just saying, you could do triple E and then save an additional 3%.
It would be cumulative if you looked at 405 to the 373, but not the...
Right.
Exactly. Yes. So let's look at that in dollars. Base bid, again, was 914. Triple E was around 880. Service reduction, 866. So it's proportional in the reduction and the associated cost. On the right-hand side, you see what the impact is on the general fund. With triple E, we're reducing the obligation by another 17,000 almost, and then with service reduction, we're down another 24,000.
When you say service reduction, you're talking about reducing the service to where, for example, or what do you have in mind?
Well, we're not necessarily talking about just cutting a route or a destination. The service reduction would be going from, say, an hour headway to an hour and a half headway. You'd be increasing the amount of time that somebody has to wait to get on the bus and go somewhere.
But that would not be system-wide. That would be in selected areas. That would be in selected areas.
Right. It would be on, it would be on the seven-day-a-week service for city residents.
Are you saying that every route in the city would move from one hour to one and a half hours?
The two of them would, if I remember correctly, I'm trying to pull it from memory, two of them would go from 40 minutes to over an hour, and one of them would go from a half hour to over an hour.
And that might have more of an impact on ridership than a fare.
Oh, yeah, certainly. No question about that, yes. This is the, of the two options here, that is certainly the least desirable because, again, our mission here is providing mobility to the community. Triple E, I think, is just improving the service that we already offer, saving some money in the process. Service reduction is actually taking some of that service off of the road.
Do you have a route or so that really is not well-used at all? I mean, I'm sure you probably have, obviously, you have better routes than others. Is there something that, if you were to cut out a route, would that be under your service reduction or triple E?
It'd be a little bit both, actually. So under triple E, we would recommend taking one of the routes off the road, okay? And that would be one of our express routes. We have the Scarlet and we also have the Gold. Scarlet goes to Courthouse Bay, very heavily used, you know, lots of people really appreciate that. The Gold, at one time, when we first created it, was, had good ridership, but because of changes in the operations of Camp Johnson and Camp Geiger, the ridership has gone down year after year after year. And that's one of the things that we would trim back, put some of those savings in our pocket to reduce the general fund obligation, and then also take some of those savings and apply it to the existing service to make it more efficient.
Let's talk a second about what actually happens out of the New River area. You look at the training mission out there and you find you have a lot of people who fall into one of two categories. Those who fly the hardware and most of them have their own vehicles, correct?
Certainly.
And then you have brand-new trainees who don't get an awful lot of time off.
And that's the challenge. Initially, when we started serving Camp Geiger, Camp Geiger is what you're referring to, we used to load people up from the Geiger Tiger on the bus, fill up a bus, and take them to the mall, and we'd do that on a regular basis. However, the way that they operate, and I'm not, I don't have firsthand experience here, I'm just speaking from what I've been told. The way they operate has changed so that when the Marines come in for training, they almost are immediately put on a bus, taken out for training, and don't get liberty until they come back. So they no longer have the weekends that they used to have when we first started the system. That allowed them to ride Jacksonville Transit, go out to the mall, and have a good time.
So if you eliminate that route, is that under triple E?
It's actually under both. It's under both, but it would, yes, it is certainly a component of triple E.
So if council said they do not want to do a service reduction, but they do want to do triple E, that would result in, pardon the pun, a service reduction to Camp Geiger and to New River Air Station under triple E?
It depends on your perspective, but.
Well, my perspective was.
Since nobody, since nobody is really riding it.
You're going to cut it back anyway.
Yes, we were going to cut it back anyways.
Okay.
That's a great way to put it.
Yeah, I think I would be.
That's just an efficiency that you're building into here.
Yeah, I don't, you know, just increase, allowing, making people wait a little longer for a ride, I mean, that's certainly an option, but it doesn't seem to be as desirable an option, so.
Well, and it kind of works against, like you were saying, you know, if we're trying to generate more revenue off of the fares, increasing the headway certainly works against that, and I'm not even sure how we would project the impact, but.
We'd be eliminating an inefficient route.
Yes.
You didn't mention it, but you created the thought that our rates are comparable to other municipalities?
Yes, sir.
If they're, go ahead.
So to put that in perspective, the city of Wilmington has a rate structure, the base ride is $2 per ride, okay? So that's 50 cents higher than what we're even proposing. Others, I think Goldsboro is $1.25, which is where we are now, and Fayetteville is at $1.50. So if you just look at those few examples, that kind of puts us in the middle of the spectrum.
I guess my thought was rather than service reductions, I understand the need that would support creating some efficiencies, but not if they're not based on demand. You know what I'm saying? I'd like to keep the service operating as efficiently as possible in terms of meeting demand.
Serve the people who are actually using it. Yes, I completely agree.
That's why you're showing us.
And I, that, that, triple E is that option. That's the way that I would describe it, is we are serving the people when they want to be served, how they want to be served, scaling back some of those unused hours. Service reduction actually would just basically cut across the board.
But if you're talking about increasing waiting time, I think that's going to affect your ridership.
There would be, there would actually, there could potentially be a reduction in waiting time under triple E, okay? But there would certainly be an increase in waiting time under the service reduction option.
So basically, the triple E, you're just looking at your current system and based on that analysis, you're going to, you're going to reduce some inefficiencies based on your current data, and by doing that, it would be a $16,000 savings.
Yes, sir.
Whereas the service reduction is just as it says, a service reduction.
Across the board, cutting, yes, service. So just to go back to the triple E again, we would be cutting one of the routes that is very, that the ridership is very, very low, okay? With that, there would be a certain amount of savings. Part of that savings, we're proposing that we just go ahead and stick in our pocket, right, and generate the 16,000 in savings for the general fund. Part of that, a very small portion of it, we would like to put back into the existing system and help to improve service. So we can improve service and at the same time, reduce the general fund.
Sounds like prudent business to me.
That's why we call it triple E. Any other questions about this before we move on? So let's look at them all put together. Got the startup fee, got option one, the fares, and then the service miles, the two different approaches there, start to really add up. This turns into real money, okay? It's not going to completely erase the 80,000, but it certainly brings it down from where it is right now. Recommendation is that we pursue the startup fee, just makes sense, use funds that have already been appropriated to offset future, what could potentially be future cost. Fares, again, it's only fair if we're reaching into the general fund and we ask passengers to help offset some of our costs. And then triple E, the business acumen piece of it, maximizing what we have, creating some savings in the process. That gives us a total of 72,765 that we're offsetting from the 83,000 and change. Let's look at this a different way. So the general fund impact fiscal '19, you can see what we put into transits, roughly 390,000. The base bid would have increased that by 83,000, yes, I said that right, by 83,000. The recommendation brings us down to 400 and change, which requires an increase of approximately 10,000. Hope that's a little bit more palatable than where we started last month. I feel that I also have to show you the other option, you know, the across-the-board cut, service reduction, that would get us down to 3,400 in additional need. But again, the concern that I have is do the cost offset benefits, or I said that backwards.
So do you need direction tonight or what? Well, what we would like is direction, and then I have a couple of questions that I want to make sure that the council is aware of. In order to have a rate increase, does the FDA require us to do any type of advertising or notification to our transit passengers?
There's a notification process that we have to follow, so it's not something that we could institute immediately. Of course, this proposal is basically oriented towards fiscal '20, which, July 1, that would start. We could start it earlier, but I think the earliest we could implement is May, if we wanted to increase the fares.
Now, beyond that, the negotiations with the contractor. Contractor bid a certain price, this would be a reduction. Does the FDA allow you to go back and modify the routes or the conditions or the statistics that were in the bid in order to accomplish these savings?
Yes. Oh, yeah. It was based upon an estimate, and so it gives us the flexibility to negotiate an actual contract.
They're good with that?
They are good.
Okay.
They're just, they're glad to have the business, of course, and so they also understand the hardships that we're going through with budgeting. We're not the only community that they work with that's having similar problems, so they're being willing partners, no questions about it.
Okay, so what the council is actually being asked is a series of questions, and to give us direction, I think there's some of these that we would like to actually have you vote on tonight if the city attorney believes it's appropriate for you to give us direction. I'm behind the consensus because it's going to come back in a contract form at a later date.
As well as the budget adoption.
So the first question is, are you comfortable with us taking the startup cost out of the current funds that are available that will not increase any additional contribution from the general fund in FY '19?
Yes.
Yes, but it will impact the general fund for FY '19, though.
Yes, sir.
It will not, it will not increase any contribution that the general fund has to make in 2019. It will be the exact same amount of money.
But it would not, it would not increase, if you allow the money to stay there, it would increase the general fund for FY '19?
Generally, we, the project, the funding for transit goes into project budget, so at the end of the year, that budget doesn't close.
Right, it's not, it's an actual enterprise fund that's sitting there, it doesn't count towards our, what we count, you know, the unobligated or whatever.
Yeah, because there are, and the reason we do it that way is you didn't spend the federal money either. If you save general fund money, you also save federal money. So that funny, that federal money and state money is available for other transportation uses. So we keep that general fund together, you know, in that project account.
The balance does not go back from transit back into the general fund budget.
And we're not requiring any additional general fund.
Money can't go for the wall, are you thinking?
Not yet.
No comment.
Not yet.
So I believe that we got concurrence to take that action.
Yes.
The second, do you concur with the fee increase? We're not asking the implementation date, but do you concur with the fee increase?
Yes.
Okay. The third question I'm going to ask is relative to the fee increase. If there's going to be an increase, how do you feel about implementing it as early into this fiscal year as possible versus waiting till July 1st? For example, if we can meet all the advertising by May the 1st, or May 15, or June the 1st, how do you feel?
It's a good idea. It's good management, I think.
Everybody comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll give Anthony the flexibility to meet all the schedules. We will try to make sure that the rate increase starts on a specific day. Anthony can look, not in the middle of the week, he may decide that a Saturday's the best day, he may decide Monday's the best day. But we give him the flexibility, the staff the flexibility, to actually decide what day it will increase.
Yes.
Okay. Now, the next question is triple E or service reduction? How many people agree with triple E?
Triple E.
Triple E, yeah.
Yeah, looks like everybody. And it's understood that under triple E, that the route going to New River Air Station will be terminated at a point, and that point will probably be, what, the end of June?
There's a process associated with that, too. So it's very likely that it would be after July 1st.
And I think we need to note that it's primarily because of the lack of use.
Yes, sir.
Not because we want to just cut that route out.
Yes, sir, exactly. And we've been talking with Joe Ramirez, the G7 office over there at Campbell's, and they understand, I mean.
Well, I mean, as long as we're clear that we're not just cutting a route, that basically there's no, people aren't using it, so therefore, we. I want to make sure, what you're saying is the city wants the public and the Marine Corps to understand, we are totally supporting the use of the facility, but because we're not seeing ridership, it's simply a waste of money.
Right.
Now, are there any other directions you need from council?
No, sir.
And I think you can see the analytics that Anthony and Ron and others have gone through to bring this down from an $83,000 number down to basically $10,000.
Excellent work.
Thank you. One thing I do want to make you aware of, I feel it's my responsibility to share this with you. MV, shortly after our last meeting, MV did provide a proposal. You remember the December date that I mentioned to you when we started, when those proposals were due? They certainly didn't make that.
From a contract point, I don't think you can entertain a bid after.
No, not after they've seen everybody else's cards.
It's just bad pool. So, long story short, I've got other slides that explain it a little bit more, but.
What was their total bid?
It was an 18% increase. It was over 700,000.
Yes, they actually submitted a request for us to use the current, give them the extension or the, execute the additional year on their contract.
Option year.
Yeah, the option year. So technically, it wasn't a late submission, but it was something that we had previously said, you only have so much flexibility on executing the, an option, meaning a price increase only 3%, you know, and they came in saying they were going to make.
So it still didn't go in terms of their current contract, so you're comfortable, I know John's comfortable.
This will be a, this will be a transition with a disruption.
Yes, sir. That's exactly right. And First Transit has done many of these. They've actually done many of these with MV. MV understood kind of our perspective, where we're heading. Of course, we didn't know the outcome until we had the conversation with the council, but speaking with the vice president of the company, they are going to fulfill their obligation, and they're going to help support us to make transition.
Follow-up notes that we will give will be, first of all, relative to parks, we'll identify the transit stops relative to all of our parks and give you a schedule. We'll also provide you with the express average ridership for both of our express routes and show you what days of the week and the time that they're provided. And then we'll also document, once again, the rates that we're proposing versus the rates that others are charged. Were there any other follow-up notes relative to transit? Mayor, that concludes the items we have. Any other items you'd like for us to carry?
Got a couple plugs that you want to be.
Please.
So if you would like some good news.
I think you got two good pieces of good news.
We do have two good pieces of good news. So the signal heads are up. I know most, if not all, of you have seen this. We're waiting on an inspection from the Department of Insurance, and then we'll be able to turn them on.
They're out there painting the lines today.
Is that right? Well, that's good. So there are actually two hurdles that we have to overcome. DOI needs to come down and do the inspection. I think they're going to do that tomorrow, okay? Once they approve, do their inspection, whatever they do, we'll be able to turn the power on. The signals will have to go into flash for at least seven days, and then, once we know the lines are down, the pavement markings, and that the under-pavement loops are in, then we'll put it into full operation. I'm hoping, I'm hoping by the end of next week.
Good, great stuff.
So, again, triple E is kind of our middle name these days. This is another example. An installation like this generally costs around $100, $120,000. We shared the work as well as the expense and the materials with DOT. I think both of our obligations put together was $40,000.
I know this was a very warranted.
Yes, sir.
Traffic signal.
One caveat for the future, though. DOT would like to see steel poles out there, okay? They've identified some funding. We don't know if it's going to be enough or not, but at some point, we might be asking for some general fund to support the installation of those steel poles.
Just take it out of your, your surplus in transit.
I'm sorry, sir, transit can't pay for that. Let's move on. Some more good news. Of course, you've seen what's happened at the High School Crossing. It's a very visible area now, that's for sure. And behaviors have changed. I mean, I've observed it. I hope you all have as well. People seem to be slowing down. We've got the ballards out there, the signs are reinstalled. We actually do have some spare components now on hand, so if it gets hit again, we should be able to repair it. DOT put these rumble strips out, which you've probably. DOT put these rumble strips out, which you've probably heard. Yeah, it makes a lot of difference, doesn't it? But this is only what I would call the midpoint of the solution for that area. We are looking for a hog signal, this is what that might look like. It's very similar to a traffic signal. The way it works is over here on either side, oop, I just messed that up. There, there we go, okay. Okay, so over here, you have a push button, and you have the same on, on the other side. So for instance, and you can see that this is, of course, another high school application. What happens is, the pedestrian pushes the button, this yellow signal right here starts to flash, okay? And then it turns solid, yellow, and then, once vehicles that were in the crosswalk have an opportunity to clear, and the vehicles that were approaching the crosswalk have the ability to stop, it's red. Once it's red, then it gives the pedestrian the clear, the walk, you know, you remember the walk signals that pedestrian signals used to have? It gives them the clearance to cross the intersection, counts down the number of seconds that they have. So it's more intuitive for the driver because it uses the yellow and the red, it's an overhead application, so it's a lot more visible. But then what I'm also hoping is that it'll help to improve some of the compliance on the pedestrians part as well. What we're seeing a lot out there is that a pedestrian will just push the button and walk straight out into the crosswalk, no delay. Of course, that's not the way you're supposed to do it. This will hopefully help to curb some of that behavior.
But the one thing we also want to mention is the cost of this is actually being split, basically one-third, one-third, one-third. Anthony's done an excellent job working with the DOT, they funded the study, the DOT is putting in some money for the physical improvements, the school board also, and then the city. The city's portion, though, is being paid predominantly through labor and.
In-kind.
In-kind service.
We're doing design work, and we're doing in-kind installation, providing some materials.
Very good.
Before we do break, though, Mr. Warden had a question, and I think you're all going to want to hear the answer.
No, I just thought you'd go ahead and make mention on the Carolina Forest.
Yes, sir.
Milling and repayment.
So there was a, there was a meeting onsite with the DOT folks, and I told you that we're going to partner with them on the mill patching and resurfacing. There's a meeting onsite today, and Deanna, they're going to start paving when? Within two weeks?
Within the next two weeks.
They're going to do the mill patching work within the next two weeks.
Now, that does not mean that they're going to resurface.
They got marked, drove today, they were marked, you can see where they've already done their preliminary work, they know exactly where they're going to work.
It is most of the road. It's not all of it, but it is most of it.
Anything else?
Thank you, sir.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Thanks, sir.
All in favor?
Yes, who is Carolina Forest?